Five to one on our P. And the rest of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Yeah, thank you. I would like to call Andy Kubos, our Executive Director of Learning Support, to recognize our Minnesota School Nurse Administrator of the Year.
I am Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, school board members viewing public. It gives me great privilege, sorry, to be standing here with Eileen Kern, who's been recognized as the School Nurse of Minnesota, Minnesota School Nurse Administrator of the Year. It's an incredible honor anytime one of our team members gets recognized locally, but at the state level, that's a whole different game. So it's a really, really great thing. I wanted to say a couple of things about Eileen. I've got to work with her for about the last year and a half. There's two things that come to mind to me when I think of Eileen. Very, very steeped in her family, and I think good leaders have a good balance between family and work. And so that's something I picked up right away. And then secondly, I just kind of stumbled into this article from a man named Dashur Kelner. Last week, it was in the Harvard publication, and talked about, "Good leaders don't forget where they came from." And I would say that is true for Eileen. She never forgets her role when she was a, locally what we call, a school nurse, and advocates strongly to make sure that the people that she serves get what they need, make sure that they're serving students. And again, that's just a sign of a great leader. So I'll give you Eileen.
I want to look down a couple of things, because I did hear there was something about this, just a few things. So I just want to say first that there are many fantastic nurses who have seen this report, and I'm very honored and privileged to get this. So I feel that Health Services Department is in a quiet little department in the school that sometimes we're not allowed until this happens. And usually that means we're not going to serve or something good if that happens. So anyone who's worked with me knows that I'm not necessarily a part of it. So I just want to make sure that Health Services is back after that. And as Andy put it, all the time, I'm a strong advocate, so I can tell you that I'm a part of the board. But I do have a passion for Health Services and for my staff, and I advocate and I speak proudly to do what I do as an administrative staff and as a student. But I also want you to be satisfied and happy to give your work and to submit any comments in your slides. Thank you. Congratulations.
Before we move into public recognition, I just wanted to state the government class is required. The requirement of our 12th grade government class is to have through a governmental meeting of some sort, things that they may attend, our city council meetings, school board meetings, department proceedings, et cetera. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and the organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. I see some students in the audience, and I'd like to invite them to come to the podium and just state your name, and if you all come from Jefferson, then tell us who your teachers are. That's my name.
I'm Kristin Munson. I'm from Jefferson High School, and my teacher is Ms. Addie.
I'm Alena Devola. My teacher is Mr. Jefferson.
I'm Ashley Robinson. I'm from Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Starling.
I'm Emma Iha, and my teacher is Mr. Starling.
At the close of the session or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for a signature on your agenda from any one of the administrators, the cabinet members that are sitting along the side of the wall. And thank you for coming tonight. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the school board item that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on. Would someone like to move to Part A, part of the agenda? Second. Thank you. Part A is our Board Business Minutes, Personnel Items, and Field Trips. Anyone opposed? Thank you. It brings us to Part B, which will be an update on negotiations. Mary Burrows, would you please come to the podium?
Okay. Chair Alada, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the school board. I do have an update on negotiations. After an all-day mediation on September 22nd, a tentative agreement was reached between Wilmington Public Schools and the Wilmington Federation of Teachers. It will now go before the VFT membership ratification, but in the next two weeks, specifics will not be released until ratification by the legislature. Hopefully it will be on the agenda in two weeks' time.
Then we have a question, that does not deal with specifics.
We can ask, really. I guess I could say, you know, just extended thanks to both sides for coming to a tentative agreement. I know both sides have worked really hard on this. It's been a long session, so thanks for all the hard work.
Somebody asked, you answered the timeline. Actually, I had two people listen. Why does it take so long for them to vote on it? So can you just explain sort of what the timeline is? I'm guessing they have, in the bylaws, they have to give a certain amount of time.
I think they want to, one, yes, there is a rule in their bylaws about how much time, but they also want to give us time for the fellow seriously to consider the offer. So I know their first meeting or their initial meeting is tomorrow, so they need to make sure that people have considered if they're going to be able to take up the offer.
If it's before or next morning, I'd be interested.
Anyone else?
Just a quick word or a thing, so I'll echo Tom's sentiments. Thanks, Sarah, that made this happen. It was a long conversation.
On both sides?
Yeah. Appreciate all the work that went into it.
Thank you, Chair. That will bring us to the proposed 2016 payable 2017 property tax levy. Would somebody like to move that resolution?
Good. Don't turn out the bells too much in this mic. Give us that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the property tax levy for the proposed 2016 payable.
The state requires the district use the term maximum on the certification sheet to allow these corrections to the levy.
Could you use your second?
Second.
Thank you. Our Executive Director of Finance, Rod Zepich, is here to do us a little PowerPoint.
Chair Alada, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is kind of the start off of the budgeting process for the 17, 18 school year. The preliminary levy is the first item, and then a second discussion with the next topic on your agenda will be the decision, guiding change document that the board will be taking. But it's kind of starting the whole, as I mentioned, the 17, 18 school year budget process. So the objective of tonight's meeting is to inform the board about the preliminary levy certification. The school board will need to vote on that levy tonight. Part of the discussion will be a review of the truth in taxation process and also the data on the pay 17 levy information. Kind of putting some things up front here, it was good news for median price homeowners. If you look at the overall median price home this year, it went up 2.8 percent or $6,200. If you look at total county, city, and school taxes, they went down $63 or 2.1 percent. School taxes went down $34 or 3.9 percent. The kind of the breakdown with percentage increases within, the cities went up 7.72 percent. The county is projected to go up 4.25 percent. In the school district, this levy presentation and the resolution shows the district asking for 2.2 percent. This is the second year in a row that our, on a median side home, the taxes went down. It went down $7 last year. Also, looking at kind of the high level of the levy itself, you can see that the biggest increase is the operating referendum. And as we go through the details, you'll see that the main cause of that is both an enrollment increase that we projected for this year that we have realized, and we will finalize the numbers in October 1. But then, looking at that increase over a two-year period of time, it showed some of the increase for the operating referendum. As you can see, we have still kept our promise to the voters when they passed the capital projects levy a couple of years ago to keep our non-operational levy flat through this page, 2017. And then the other area, as you'll see, it's mainly due to our refinancing, the rest to show that it's a slight job. So the overall is going up a little over $1 million or 2.2 percent. The overall truth in taxation process, the district needs to send in their preliminary levy to the counties by September 30. That information is used to prepare tax statements that go to homeowners in November. We come back in December with a truth in taxation hearing, which is part of our board session on the 12th, that the board gives opportunity to the, if you have any questions about the levy itself. At that night, the school board also certifies the final levy, which is then used after the first of the year to actually come up with the property tax bills. So the overall process for this year is that we received our first information on the 8th. Tonight, we're looking for the levy submission. We need to give the information to Hennepin and Scott Counties by the 30th. As I mentioned, the truth in taxation in November, the certificates go out, and then on the 12th, a final submission. So if you look at the overall truth in taxation in our levy, we have five major categories: referendum, referendum other, which is equity, community services, debt services, and then other. And as was read in the resolution, the school board can either determine to levy an amount or put on their tax maximum. Just in case there's any adjustments that are being done between now and the 30th, is to make sure that we levy the appropriate amount. So if we look at first the referendum, as I mentioned, referendum is going up 859,000. The main issue with that is the enrollment increases and also a inflationary increase on the referendum amount itself. Also, the second is prior year adjustments. Since we saw that we were over 100 students more than what we were projecting last year, we show an increase also in the prior year adjustments. So overall, it's a $1.4 million increase or 11.1 percent. If we move to the equity levy, the equity levy is broken up into different pieces. The main equity revenue piece is more of, as mentioned down at the bottom there, is intended to reduce the disparity between the highest and lowest revenue districts within a regional basis. As you can see, we have a slight decline in our plain equity. But if you look at the next two items, which are more built on pupil units, and as I mentioned, our pupil unit's going up, that's why you see the increase in those areas offsetting the overall, which is showing that this is going up 243,000 or 2.6 percent. The next category is community services. Community services is going up about $100,000. The main area within this area that's going up is part of our disabled care of after-school programming. The costs are more of, let's say, a pass-through of costs, and those costs line up over time, and that's just passing through those costs in that area. Debt service, as the board is back in, a year ago, a little over a year ago, refinanced some bonds, that's why we're showing a decline in the $653,000 in debt service. Adjustment to prior year, there's a small reduction there, showing an overall $751,000, $52,000 reduction in debt service. So overall, looking at it coming down, our current pay 2016 was $50,225,000. This year, $51,300,000, or the difference of a little over, or just under $1.1 million or 2.2 percent. This is just recapping what we already talked about before. The operating referendum was the main reason for the increase, mainly due to enrollment increases above and beyond what we were expecting. The non-operational, again, is flat as guaranteed. And then our other areas mainly down due to the refinancing of our debt. Here again, this is showing the reduction of the $63 and the $34. So our next steps, the certification of the preliminary levy tonight, we will take that, and we need to provide that to the counties by the 30th. The state and district and also the county, based on our maximum calculation, will make sure that everything is up to date by the, up to the 30th. And then the final certification will be on the 12th.
Questions?
This slide, it's good news for median price homeowners. So that's for the median price. Do you have any information for houses that are $400,000, $500,000? Are their taxes going down or staying flat? Do you have any idea?
I have not done a calculation. That's mainly what I get from the, working with the county and the city, and they provide it on a medium-sized home. I mean, we can provide that information if you need it.
Okay. I was just curious if this is true for all homeowners, or people that have lower income or lower-priced homes, if their taxes are going up or staying flat? Just wanted to know.
Well, if you look at, just as a gauge, if you go back to that slide here, you look at it that the median price went up 2.8 percent, but the taxes went down 2.1 percent as a total of everything. So it's really, it's a spread of 5 percent between the two.
Probably 60,000 for most people.
There was a, with the first phage of the Mall of America coming off, the tax capacity itself increased 14.5 percent. About that 10.3 percent was the...
Questions?
Okay. I know October 1st is sort of a big day for attendance, you know, you have to give your October 1 number, and so it was kind of interesting that you had to provide this on September 30th. My assumption is that on September 30th to October 1st, we're not going to gain or lose 200 students either way. We're going to have a pretty good idea, we have a good idea now. But, so how often are we polling? I mean, and how often is it going to change between?
Currently, we're doing an extract on a weekly basis. And we're doing a comparison. What we do is, we look at a five years going back at that same point in time every, every single week of these kind of 10 periods is what we do, is from the beginning of July until October 1st. It's starting to level off pretty, pretty much. We're looking right now that we're probably going to be in the 140 to 150 up range of students.
Yeah. So you're polling often enough, so that way we shouldn't be surprised between now and Friday, and all of a sudden like, oops, we're...
No. And the difference with the levy itself, the levy does those adjustments on a yearly basis. So it's, and that's why you saw the big adjustment for 17. I mean, we're making assumptions on 17, 18 school year, you know, almost six months before it starts.
Sure. Yeah. And so for people looking at this, because if we didn't have that increased enrollment, then this would be a completely different picture. If everything was flat, right?
Correct.
And so people really shouldn't be worried that it's going to be off by, I mean, it'll be off by a few, but not by 100 or something like that.
No. And it would be as if our enrollment was close, similar to what we were expecting, it wouldn't have been a large, as a $1.6 million difference here.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to post? No. Thank you. Number two is our review of the guiding change document for right sizing the budget 2017, 2018. And, we all have the copy. I mean, it's in the packet. So what we need to do is look at that middle column and discuss if there are any of these items that were unacceptable to us last year, if we'd like to remove them, change them. Do you want to begin?
Sure. I'd like to discuss, as much as I would not want to ever have to do this, I would like us to discuss taking off closing schools, maybe some others, but maybe we should start with that one, since we are trying to have 19 buildings. That poses a problem in this district compared to a lot of other districts. So just wanted to see if that, if other people are willing to take that off, if we find the need to. Hopefully with the increase we see enrollment, that won't happen, but, you know, we're not quite sure. Enrollment always seems to be fluid, so does that mean it'll still be up six months from now? I don't know. But, anyway, that's my suggestion.
So the question is, the guiding change document, right sizing the budget, are we looking at 2017, 18? Are we looking at from now until 2020? Or something like that? I mean, it's the document that we had originally done back a while ago, and when we, when we did the unacceptable means to right size in the budget. And as Donna has mentioned, since then, we've been doing some cuts and cuts, and we anticipate more cuts. So by taking a few of those off the unacceptable and making them an acceptable option, I would support closing the school option to be removed. And I'd also like to remove, sell district property, some assets, in case there's an opportunity to sell property. If we have to close a school, then that's the next follow-up, that we would probably sell some district property. But there might be some situations now where some district properties could be looked at. So by removing them, that would put them in the option to consider category.
My understanding is we review this every year, don't we?
Correct. And part of it is also to look at giving the administration time to be able to research different options and impacts of those options to be able to come back to the board. Yes, it is a one-year document, but some of the items that are in that middle column, if you would take them out of the middle column, it wouldn't be something that we would be just looking at, that we could do within a one-year period of time. It would have to take multiple years of planning to be able to do it.
Go ahead.
That's true. And we're thinking, for the folks that are in the audience that maybe can't see this, we're thinking of moving some, one, maybe more from the middle column over to the right, where the, where the district can analyze and just have a crack at what this might look like. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, we're talking about moving things, and we're looking at, I've got a hard copy, it's up on the screen here. I don't know if the students can see it, if they're quite following or understanding. Originally, the middle one was unacceptable, nobody can touch it, so we don't even, the district doesn't even go there. So now we're going to take a look at this and rethink it, and see if there's anything that we want to let the district just take a look at and study. As Rod said, it may take a couple, three years for something to have adequate study and input. Does that help summarize?
Sure.
I could see moving district property, although that seems to be a sort of a quick fix, one-time thing.
Right.
You can only sell it once. I certainly don't want to increase safety risks, violate the law, put in jeopardy any targeted state, federal funding. So I could see, you know, the only ones that are left to consider are three, which is the middle three, which are close schools, sell district property, or consolidate two high schools into one. And all of those sting, they have some discomfort associated to them. But if we move one of these out of the unacceptable zone, it doesn't mean that anything's going to happen with it, it just means district has a chance to study it. So I'd be in favor of at least district property and moving perhaps closed schools to a study.
Let me understand. So this is a one-year proposal, just kind of like, hey, these are the things we're thinking about for one year. I guess I was looking at it as, as we continue to look at right sizing the budget over the past few years and the next few years, you know, it's going to be more of a, hmm. Well, we can, we can look at it annually, but at the same time, as Rod had mentioned, you know, we need to start thinking about some of these other things, too, and so those are options to consider. So as you mentioned, those three. And one of the whys that we have... Just kind of like, hey, these are the things we're thinking about for one year. I guess I was looking at it as, as we continue to look at right sizing the budget over the past few years and the next few years, you know, it's going to be more of a, hmm. Well, we can, we can look at it annually, but at the same time, as Rod had mentioned, you know, we need to start thinking about some of these other things too. And so those are options to consider. So as you mentioned, those three. And one of the whys that we had in the first column, it talks about declining enrollment. I don't know if we should ever remove that because one of our concerns is always making sure that we have, you know, adequate enrollment. And so that impacts some of the other unacceptables.
I think we have used this in the, in the short term that we've used it. We've used it for a kind of starting the budget process. Uh, there isn't anything to, uh, say because this is a, a board document. Um, that the board can't use it for long-term planning also within the finances or facilities.
It's just a guiding.
So if we, sorry, if we take it out of the unacceptable, it can always come back in a year or two, right? It's just to look into it kind of more carefully? That's the whole idea?
It, it's, you know, some of those items are, like I mentioned, are, take some time to be able to do some research on and the rest. And for the administration and others to spend a lot of time on something that the board isn't interested in doing, doesn't make sense. If the board is saying now, which I'm kind of hearing with some of the, the comments around the table, that they would like at least to see some of the impact of, of those options, what they would entail and kind of what we would need to do as a district if that was used or needed in the future.
So when I look at this document, I look at the, the left of, left column of why we need to right size the budget. And I look at the things that are within our control. And we, we really can't control the declining enrollment. I mean, we can invest and innovate a program to try to bolster enrollment, but really the enrollment is beyond our control. Just like the state funding increase that is less than inflationary, we can't control that. We can advocate for more money. We can encourage our residents to vote for those that support public education, but we can't control that. And really, the only things that we can control on this list are the need to pay competitive wages and benefits and small schools and class sizes. And those are, I think, reflection of our values as a board. I think that we have a better than market value for our, our wages and, and benefits. And we do that intentionally. It's not like it was accidental. One day we woke them up, look at that, we're paying a lot. It was by design. We value it, just like we value small schools and small class sizes. But I think that we continuing in this right sizing the budget process, we need to start looking at these values and prioritizing them. And which do we value more than the other? Obviously, we value all of them. You know, as a, as a parent who has kids in these schools, I like my kids being in a class with 22 kids. I like them being in a school with less than 500 students. But when I look at the, the research and I see, well, which one of these has the biggest impact on learning? And it's quality teachers. And we get quality teachers by having competitive wages. That's how we can attract, retain the best teachers around. So that would be my top priority, that we maintain the, um, competitive wages. So I would like to, on the unacceptable, I would like to make an addition that during this negotiation cycle and the one starting in June, that we will not freeze salaries or reduce benefits. Cause I think, to me, that would be unacceptable. And I'm also think that we need to remove the closed schools and sell district property. Not that I want that to happen, but I would like to see the board or the administration put together what it would look like if we were to close a school. And what would that do to enrollment at other schools and class sizes at other schools? And, and boundary changes and such. And how much money would we save if we did something like that? Is it worth doing? Would we even save enough money to make it worthwhile? So not saying that we want to close schools, but it would be nice to have those opportunities investigated by administration. So that's where I stand. Is that, is that too much? Was I clear on? Should I recap? So add under unacceptable, will not freeze salaries or reduce benefits for this current negotiation cycle and the one starting in June. And remove closed schools and sell district property assets.
I guess it's my turn.
Director Lewis.
Yeah, I suppose, uh, as part of the conversation, um, sort of the way that I look at this is, is what we're just telling the administration is, is as you're going through, uh, coming up with a budget for the next year or next two years, um, don't waste your time with this or that. And so, and then the opposite of that is if it's not on the list, they sort of make an assumption that it's probably going to be okay. So, um, we could take closed schools off of here. They could come back with a resolution to close the school and we could always just say, nah, we don't like it. But then they might say, well, why did you have us go down this rabbit hole? So I think we need to be careful with what we, what we ask for. Um, I know closing schools is a hot topic for people. People get very emotional about it. I tell you, they closed my school. I cared for about a week. Um, and then it's now Kelly Park. And I enjoyed playing baseball at that field more than I ever enjoyed going to the school. So it's, you know, it's sad and it can be fine as well. Um, district property, I'd say, I would put that before I would say close the school. But, um, I don't think those necessarily have to be on here as completely unacceptable. Um, maximizing the usage of space makes sense if, if we could do it. I don't know that we could even do it. Especially if now we're up 150 kids, it probably wouldn't even make sense. Um, but if next year all of a sudden we were down 200 kids, you know, then maybe start looking at something like that. You know, it's funny looking at that consolidate two high schools into one. At first I'd say, there's no way you would ever do that. But at the same time, we've combined so many sports. And I get questions from people all the time, like, okay, so now we have a combined sport, but we can't compete as a team because the, the four kids from Jefferson can't be on a team and now we don't have enough. And so it'd be interesting to see what would happen with, uh, with participation in, in Minnesota State High School League events. If we could actually just have full teams. But, um, that I think would be something that we'd have to look in like a 10-year plan, not in next year. We're going to have one Bloomington High School. Put in jeopardy any targeted state federal funding or mandated programs. So this is an interesting one also uh, that we need to consider. For instance, like we have, I don't know if we're talking about it tonight. I don't think we're talking about it tonight. But like the pre-K funding, if they attach, okay, well, we're going to give you this funding, but now all of a sudden you're going to have to do this, that, or the other. That's going to increase your, your expenses by more than what you're going to gain from doing the program, then maybe we do put in jeopardy a targeted funding for a state program. I mean, I don't know. If we determine, you know what, we could do it better for less money than what they're going to give us for, for offering it, then maybe that's something that we do take off the table.
I just want to clarify, this says for mandated programs. The, um, early childhood funding that we just got is, is is targeted and it's a grant that we voluntarily say yes or no to. So that's different than mandated programs. I don't think we're going to take any mandated programs because we would get in trouble with several, um, uh, levels of law if we took off mandated programs.
Well, you don't have to take them off, but I don't know.
Or if we put them in jeopardy.
If you could, if you could, if you could provide the service for less, for, if you could provide better service and not take their money and have it be revenue neutral, go ahead. Why wouldn't you? I don't know. Once again, I don't know if it's possible. But I know sometimes if you, if you take their money to provide the service that they want, the way that they want you to do it, sometimes you have to jump through a lot more hoops than if you just did it yourself. Like I said, I don't know that it, that is possible. But for the most part, I'm good with getting rid of any of those other than, obviously, we don't want to violate the law agreements or policies. And we don't want to increase safety risks. The other ones I'm, I'm good with.
So if the, if we're not going to do this, because it takes time, right? We're not going to do this this year. Not going to do that next year possibly, right? Because it takes time to get there. You know, like closing schools, selling district property, or even consolidating two high schools into one. Then what would be the reason for taking it right out right now? And can we still look into the consequences or the impact that, that will have if we were going to do any of those? I mean, can we just go ahead and get that kind of information? Or we really have to take it out of the unacceptable in order for us to be able to have inform, more information about what the impact is in the school district if we do any of those? That's one thing. And then the other one, the other question is, um, you know, when you look in between closed schools and consolidate two high schools into one, I would be curious to know, you know, which one of the two will have a higher impact in the district.
I guess from a, a perspective, we can always do an analysis on anything the board wants us to look into. Uh, what this is, again, is this is a board document. It's what the board is saying is acceptable or unacceptable for us to come up with for options in uh, reducing the budget both currently and, and into the future. So if, whatever the board decides, if they want us to do it outside this document, we are, can do it outside this document. Or we can do it based on including it as, as an analysis within.
When do we come back to this document again? Exactly when?
To review.
Back anytime we want.
It's our document.
Yeah. Go ahead. One, two.
You can go ahead, Jim. I already spoke to him.
Well, the interesting thing about this document is too, is because it has that third column on the right, results expected from right sizing the budget. And you know, and so as we have already seen, some of the results, programs aligned to district priorities, eliminating of redundant programs. Some of those we've already done in an attempt to right size the budget. As you all know, some more of these are going to be done to right size the budget without touching the unacceptables or understand, or and the whys we, why we have to right size the budget is to do all these types of things. But the results are, are kind of an interesting batch of, of, uh, cuts. And so as we go through this and we've seen some before, we, we introduced some programs a few years back and now we're taking them off. Uh, we're, we, our class sizes have stayed pretty much the same. But I, I guess leaving this document almost the same way, we're still going to be getting into budget adjustments per se, which is the result type of, uh, activity from right sizing the budget. The expectations from right sizing the budget are the results. And we identified certain things we don't want to touch and why we don't want to touch them or what we need to do.
My understanding is we've pretty much cut to the bare bones everywhere else. So this is what's left of the untouchables. And should we move them over to the touchable side? Just to, you know, I mean, when we...
And then I would say add more to the touchables.
To the touchable.
Yeah. Because, you know, it has changed over the year or two years.
So should we?
Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm here.
I guess I just wanted to say that as much as, um, I value small schools and class size, I agree with Director Bennett. I value highly qualified staff more. Um, unless we have significant changes in the state and how they provide revenue to our public schools or this district sees a large increase in enrollment, that is the choice that we are going to have to make. So I would rather, if I'm going to have the discussion about it and start talking about it and considering some of those options, then I think they need to be off the unacceptable list. I don't feel comfortable having the conversation when they're still sitting on our list is unacceptable. So I think if we're serious going to talk about it, then they need to come off the list. And I would say, um, we could take all three of those that have been discussed tonight. Close schools, just sell district assets and consolidate high schools.
And then add the other one, add the, about teachers or staff benefits? And add the other one, the one that you proposed?
Sure, I'm fine with that.
Is what you're saying?
Add that to the unacceptable?
I'm fine with that.
Take those out of the unacceptable and then add the other one?
I don't know that we can put free salaries or not free salaries on there because even if we wanted to, that's not necessarily even an option because you have to negotiate the contracts. And so
Okay.
you could budget for, we're going to freeze everyone's salaries. And you could say that you're not going to, um, or, or opposite. You could budget that you are going to freeze salaries, but it's still going to just depend on what you, what happens in the negotiation. So I don't even know that that's, I mean, it's within our control to a certain extent, but I don't know that that's, um, that you would, that you would even count on that. I mean, so I, I don't know. For me, the class size is the biggest thing, you know, because I see that, that there's, you know, discussion of, of increasing class size past 30, you know, up to 31. And, and, uh, I haven't spent years researching it, but I've spent hours, a lot of hours researching it. And it seems like 30 is, is where you start getting your tipping point. You can go from, from 20 to 30 and not see a whole lot of change in, in student outcomes. And there's even some studies that have shown in some cases, um, having 28, 29, 30, uh, some of those were, were scoring higher than classes with 20, 22. But for me, that's, that's a higher priority. And that is something that we can control. That is something that we can put in the budget. Where we could say, you can't budget higher than, um, 30, uh, in, in, uh, core classes. Obviously, you probably wouldn't want to do that in orchestra. Cause, you know, you want to have more in orchestra and choir and things like that. But you could say for, you know, a fifth grade class or a sixth grade, or, you know, a fifth grade class, you can have more than 30 students. Or that's what your staffing ratio is going to be. Versus where putting into their budget unacceptable means, uh, part of the negotiation, I think that would, I don't know. I don't, I don't know how that would, how that would work out. Cause that's then telling the board next year, oh, by the way, we agreed last year that we were going to do X, Y, Z.
My rationale, I'll be honest, that yes, it's negotiated, but I, I would like to put in the unacceptable that the administration shouldn't even make their recommendation if they were to even think in that way. So when we get to negotiations and they say, well, we can, you know, help balance the budget by freezing salaries. If we have in this document, then they won't even research that idea. Cause they'll know that it's already unacceptable to us even having that conversation.
But I'd like to see what the other, what the other, what else would you do? If, if it came to that, if it was freeze salaries or do something else, I'd like to know what that something else was.
Well, the something else would be small schools and, and class sizes.
But we can't close a school that fast. And I don't know if you could raise a class size, you know what I mean, for the next, the next school year? I guess you could.
Well, I mean, the cloud, this closing school would be a multi-year process, obviously. But I mean, it's something that we could budget long-term. If we say we're going to close a school in three years, then that affects our operational costs over the next 10 years. So it would change.
Next year is the one where we have to make the wage increase or freeze. I, I just think they would be tying the hands of the negotiators.
Well, that's the whole point of this, of the unacceptable is to tie their hands on what we find unacceptable. If we don't want to tie hands, then why have the document?
I mean, it, it, it would also tie the hands of the other side. I mean, it's po, it's unlikely, but it's possible if we'll go into like not going to happen zone. Richfield says, hey, if you come to Richfield, we're giving everyone gold nuggets. And so then we say, oh, shoot, we just lost 200 kids or 300 kids to Richfield. So now all of a sudden it's, it's okay. Well, we can either lay off a whole bunch of people or we can hold salaries steady for a year. I mean, I know for me personally, and I, you know, people think I'm crazy. I would still be teaching at my school with the salary they offered me eight years ago versus taking the raises and then now I don't have a job there. If they said, well, here's your option. You can stay at this salary for the next 10 years, or you can be here for five years and then go do something that you hate. Well, I would still be there. So I won't want to take that off the table. Right? Because I want to allow latitude on both sides to, to be able to go to negotiations in six months and say, you know, here's, here's where we're at. six months and say, you know, here's, here's where we're at. Now, I don't think that that's going to be an issue, especially if Rod's numbers are correct and we're up 150 kids. I don't see that being a problem, but just in case, there might be people out there that think the same way that I do.
I think this is a good start. I think we're going to have to talk a little bit more in a different session, maybe, study session or something like that, where we can get at some of the little things. Now, just looking at it as the thing, as the item said, review of guiding change document, you know, we're reviewing it, and we're finding that there's all kinds of options, revisions, or other things to put in here now that weren't here a year ago when we did it. So now I think it would be certainly worthwhile to have a study session or something else in light of what we already know to be some budget considerations for 2017, 2018.
All right, well-
So I recommend, I recommend.
All right, how about if we do it in two steps? Does anyone disagree with moving the three items, closed schools, sell district property, or consolidate two high schools into one, into the far-right column for consideration?
Well, I don't, is that what we're discussing? We want to put that as a result, that we want them to close schools?
Well, I think they just go off. Okay, I got to, I got to.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, I'd be fine with a result that says we would like to see a, you know, a study done by the administration on how closing a school would impact the district.
I think they just go off.
That'd be a good result.
So they would just go off?
Yeah.
Okay. So does anybody have an objection to removing those three items from this unacceptable column? No one has an objection? Okay. So then, how does everyone feel about Tom's suggestion, moving the competitive wage and benefit package over to the unacceptable? Does anybody agree with Tom, or I don't know how you want to put it?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I agree certainly with the sentiment. I'm not sure how in practical application it'll work. So I need to, that one I need to think about more. I mean, I like what you're saying. I think I understand why, but I'm just not sure how it would work.
Well, and the definition of competitive wage and benefit package has been suspect in the last two negotiation sessions, so that's unclear. Who do you compete, who do you compete with?
Moving anything from the left to the middle, I'm just saying, put in the middle that it would be unacceptable to freeze salaries or reduce benefits.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying. I don't know if you guys don't agree with that? I mean, this is, if you don't agree with that, then let's not put it there. If you agree with that, then let's put it there.
Director Palmer.
Well, it just seems like this document is going to change anytime the board decides it's going to change, you know? It's not like we're tied to anything, you know, like we're talking about two years, five years, 10 years here. So if we're going to take some stuff out of the unacceptable, which I'm, you know, I'm not against it, but I'm still hesitant, but also understanding that it's something that can come back, you know, in six months probably, right? In a year or before. So I am comfortable with, with what Director Bennett is proposing, too.
Should we, Director Stegaf has suggested that we table this for more discussion? Or we could just-
Vote on that now. I don't care however you guys want to do it. You want to have more discussion, or you want to vote on that part two, or? I guess we didn't vote, we just had a consensus on the last one.
Yeah, I think it's a consensus, I think it's something we all need to, or at least the majority of us agree to, but, you know, I think if we're using this document appropriately, it should be, we do this before each budget process. So I don't think we should be coming back to it every couple of months, because then we're, you know, going back and forth of what we're telling the administration we're okay with. It should be annually, we look at this, okay, we're going into cuts, what's acceptable, what's unacceptable, and we come with a decision throughout the whole budget process for this year. That's my understanding of using this document.
All right. Superintendent?
Recall, we came up with this document a couple of years ago. And at that time, we came up with the things in the middle because there was a concern about enrollment. And when we talked about enrollment, the demographic forecasted that we may be going down and may be dipping below 10,000 students. And because of that, we said, what weren't we going to touch? We said, just because we go down in enrollment, we weren't going to close any schools, we weren't going to consolidate the high schools, and we weren't going to sell any property. That was the guidelines for us. So we stopped. Administration normally would be looking at all these different possibilities if enrollment goes down. We put that aside. We didn't look at what the properties were worth, we just put us, what kinds of musical chairs we could do with properties and students. We stopped all, that was the purpose for that middle column at that time. Does everybody recall that? So now what we have is, we're coming up with another set of factors that is just as critical, enrollment's going back up, which is good, but we have another set of factors that we all need to be mindful of. One is the election. Election could change a number of things, both nationally and locally, and we, my suggestion is we wait till after election before making any decisions. If there's a change in the national level, whatever, there's going to be a change, whatever the change, it could affect the U.S. Department of Education, and it could have a large impact on our school, on all school districts. So we need to, I suggest we wait for that. We also need to wait for enrollment. We need to see how enrollment actually comes out. We have the audit coming up, and we also have, there's a lawsuit out there, the Cruz lawsuit on consolidating, on the de facto segregation and the consolidation of one metro district. We need to see if that thing has any legs, if it's going to move along. That lawsuit is going to be heard, we'll, we'll know more in the coming months about the, if that lawsuit has any traction. Another thing is the state forecast is going to come out in December, early December. I suggest we wait a little while before we make any decisions like this, because that will help guide us on the kinds of explorations we do. So my request is that we wait at least till maybe after election, sometime in late November before we take this thing up.
Unacceptable?
Right.
So we leave everything the way it is until then?
Sure. I wanted to add in too, part of our conversation last time, if I remember correctly, and it all got lobbed, left under programs aligned to district priorities, because we started saying, okay, well, what about fifth grade instrumental music? I want to make sure that we don't put that on there. What about art class? I want to make sure that we still have art, and I want to make sure we have this and this. We sort of had kind of like this à la carte list that started growing, like, here's the programs. And I think what we ended up saying is instead of giving them a sheet of 45 things, to just say, here's our, sort of our district priorities and the values and the types of programming that we expect to come out of this. And so we might want to revisit that conversation as part of our results conversation over here on the right, to say, here's the things that we still value, here's the things that, you know, if, if you say that you're going to get rid of this specific thing, you know, then I will absolutely not accept the budget. And so when we, if we, if we, if we're going to table this until November or December, then I think as part of that, we should have a conversation about our priorities and really what we, what we want, because, yeah, I think just saying, getting rid of our priorities, that's, that's a little bit too broad.
Director McFadden?
Administration plan on coming to the board with a dollar amount of what we need to cut out of next year's budget?
I think it was coming in December.
We can really put this off until then, and then we'll know the state forecast, one of the election results, we'll have a more of a, a better guess on what our future economics stability will be. So I'm fine with postponing this until December.
And I think we have shared already with the, the board a couple times of a list of items that we would be thinking of depending on where we are in that $2.5 million range. Yep.
Okay. Okay. And we'll table this until after the election at least. Thank you. It brings us to number three on the Part B agenda. Minnesota School Board Association Legislative Resolution. Innovation Zone.
Madam Chair.
Please.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approved submitting the attached completed 2017 MSBA Legislative Resolution Form.
Thank you. And this resolution is regarding the Innovation Zone, and-
I'll speak to it.
Please.
Sure.
All right. Last fall, Congress enacted the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is a reauthorization of the No Child Left Behind Act. Upon hearing that news, Dr. Heisit and I visited the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Castellius, with our ideas on how the state and our district could capitalize on this new federal law. The Commissioner responded that the U.S. Department of Education is going to take months to promulgate their rules to tell states what to do with respect to this law. So she suggested, she liked some of our ideas, she said, why don't we, Dave and I, pursue introducing a bill at the upcoming legislative session to capitalize on the 2012 session law, which is about the Innovation Zone? And she said that we should do this, so Dave and I call us the group of interested parties, stakeholders, including outside agencies, the AMSD, to come together to get this bill introduced. And we're successful in getting a House and Senate bill introduced. It made it all the way to the end of the session, to the Joint Conference Committee, but it didn't make the K-12 ominous bill. So we fell short. That brings us to today. The Minnesota School Board Association is developing its legislative platform for the upcoming session. As part of their process, they ask school districts to pass resolutions to suggest policy ideas to their platform process. So that's what this is all about. We have the group that introduced the two bills last year, we reconvene, and we are now approaching different organizations to put this on their platform. It is about amending the Innovation Zone law and strengthening it. So we've approached MSD, MSBA, MASA with these ideas, and they're all open to supporting an amending of the Innovation Zone law. And I'll give you some examples of what we're looking at. We're looking at alternative testing, we're looking at possibly reviewing the math grad standards for students, you know, that was not requiring Algebra II. We're looking at if students can, are going to take internship opportunities because of career exploration, we can count their seat time differently. Right now, they have to be in the classroom, in their seat to get, to get revenue for those students. And we like to see a different kind of student attendance recording. So those are some of the things that Innovation Zone law would allow us to do. So that's what we're proposing here. We put it in the format of MSBA, the way they want the resolution, so.
Anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair. I just want to clarify that the Legislative Committee for the Board also met with Superintendent. We had a meeting about, about this, we discussed it, and we support it.
Thank you.
So any other further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, I have a question. So you will take care of submitting this, or do you want me to?
I will.
Okay.
I'll take care of it.
All right. Just want to make it clear who's doing it. Okay. That brings us to number four, approval of the 2015 to 17 Community Education Independent Hourly Employees Wage and Benefit Plan. Someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approved the 2015, 2017 Community Education Independent Hourly Employees Wage and Benefit Plan.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you. Mary Burrows, our Executive Director of Human Resources, is here to discuss this with us.
Chair Baralata, Superintendent Putataki, members of the School Board. This is the second part of our non-unit that usually comes to the board, and is similar to the non-unit that you saw previously. So I'll briefly go over the changes to that contract. Included in the changes in the contract, the deductible out-of-pocket in-network maximums for the health insurance were changed due to IRS limits increasing. The district contribution to health insurance also changed per LMC, Early Management Committee Recommendation, prior board approval. District contribution to HSA changed per IRS and contract. Our district-approved leave section was updated to meet State Statute 181.9413. Wage schedules were improved, 1% increase on each cell in both years, not including longevity. Additional payment of $500 was granted, provided by hours worked for each year. Our casual hourly wage schedule was also increased by 1% in each cell in both years. We also modified the aquatic instructor schedules to meet the new minimum wage laws that have been increasing the past two years. Then we did some housekeeping types things, so just dates of contract changing and those type of things.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Director Bennett?
For the listening audience, could you just kind of go over like who's included in this group, and how many employees roughly there are that this affects?
I'm not sure how many employees. So this is all our community ed hourly, so like Kid Safari, those workers, Galaxy, our aquatics programs, our lifeguards, some of our family instructors.
Okay. So what is the, the current minimum wage is 950, correct?
I believe so. I'd have to look at that.
So I was looking in some of these, on some of these, and it had the pay go up to $9, so it'd be below minimum wage?
Minimum wage, this, again, this contract is for 1315, or 1517.
Okay.
So each year, as the minimum wage increased, this contract has increased. If you've noticed, it'll say per certain dates. Yeah.
So those, those positions are now just going to be, go up with, when minimum wage goes up, it'll just go up automatically?
Yeah, yeah. It's by law, yeah, you have to.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Mary. Okay, it will bring us to our board member reports. Director Bennett?
I'll just go through quickly. So I was able to attend a PTA meeting at Normanda Hills and a PTSA meeting at Poplar Bridge. Those are two of my schools. It was lucky that they weren't, they weren't both on the same night, because usually, they're always on Tuesdays, and often they're on the same night, so I don't get to get both of them. Wasn't able to get to the PTA meeting for Olson Middle School. I'll hopefully do that one next month. On both of the PTA meetings, there, we had conversations about the teacher contract, so that was good to be able to be there and have that conversation, answer questions. And Normanda Hills, this last Friday, they had their movie night. I wasn't able to attend, because I was at the football game with all you guys, and, but my kids went and they had a blast. And Poplar Bridge is having their movie night this Friday. And also, both PTA meetings, they, there was a call for, they need help in the lunchroom, so serving lunches. So if any of you have, you know, an afternoon free, or anyone who's watching at home have an afternoon free that would like to volunteer in our schools, it's a great way to get in there and serve food to our kids and see all of our kiddos come through, and you get a free lunch out of it.
Free lunch out of it, yeah.
So, I mean, I do as much as I can, you know, with me being the school, I don't do it as much as I, I used to be able to, but I'm doing as much as I can. And I also attended the Youth Advisory, Parent Advisory Council meeting last Thursday. It was good to see Dick and Don there. I remember when I, I was a member of that committee for, for six years as a parent, and I think I could count on one hand how many board members came. And it was always right before election, never see them again. So it's nice to have three board members coming to a meeting, it shows how much we support early childhood. And they're just, they're going like gangbusters over there at early childhood. They've got waiting lists, they're adding programs, can't keep up with the demand of all the, all the kids that want preschool and early childhood programs. So that's a, that's a great problem to have. The more kids we get into early, early learning programs, the better they're going to be when they get to kindergarten. And so that's about it for my report.
Anyone else over here? Director Lebov?
I think this was since the last meeting. Went to the Bloomington Heritage Days Parade. That was since the last meeting, right? Got to walk with Indian Mount, so that was excellent, a lot of fun. Kennedy High School Hall of Fame meeting, and then also Legislative Committee met. And so we're, we're got, or, we either just got the next one on the books, or we're in the process of getting the next one on the books. And so I'll let Nellie speak to that, but yeah, it was a good couple of weeks.
Sorry, maybe not a town.
Lot of fish.
Oh, it's fishing. Oh, it's fishing.
Rainy.
Director Stigga.
Um, well, just really quickly, you know, now that falls here, we all have, um, new buildings that we're assigned to, so, um, I've spent a little time at Olson Elementary is my new, uh, building, um, trying to get to know some of the teachers and parents there, and was able to attend, um, both a room parent meeting and a PTA meeting, and, you know, just, um, really starting to, um, get to know people there. I'm not really familiar, I did sub as a parent in that building a long, long time ago, but I didn't really recognize any teachers from that, so, um, but anyway, um, but what I really wanted to talk about a little bit tonight is, my other building I have now is the whole community ed campus over there, and all the other things that are in that building, and so I just wanted to highlight a couple things there. Um, you know, I, I'm not sure that people realize, just that, that, you know, we think of pre-K as what we're about, but that there's so many adult services also that are through this district, through, um, the community ed and, and Metro South. And so I just wanted, you know, people to know that, you know, you can go there, there's an adult diploma program, there's a GED prep program, there's, um, ESL free English classes, all of those programs are at Metro South, and then all of the students that are in those also have access to, um, free college prep classes and math, reading, and writing. So, um, you know, there's a lot of things that we also do for adults in this community that I don't think people really think about. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, um, I had a chance to visit the Bloomington Occupational Training and Evaluation, better known as BOAT. I just wanted to say that, um, that was probably the highlight of my visits, was I was there when some students came from the high school, and I got to watch as the, what a great job the BOAT staff does in helping a student the first time on a new job there, and teaching them the skills. And there was also a parent that was just hired in that program that came, that was also brand new, so not only were they, um, you know, teaching the student, they were also teaching the parent how to help that student in that job in the future, so I just thought it was a great example of the great work. But I wanted to say a little bit, if I can pull this up, about BOAT, because I'm not sure businesses are aware that they can, um, send work there to BOAT for, this is for students with disabilities, so that they, um, can get vocational skills. And so I just wanted to say some of the things, I know that a nonprofit that I've been involved with had them pack their bags for their walk before numerous times, and they did a great job, so they just wanted to make sure people are aware of that. I know our schools send some things for them to do, but it says that they, um, it says they can, um, do mail sorting, collating, packaging, assembly, stuffing, cutting, pencil sharpening, Velcro application, folder assembly, three-ring binder assembly, confidential shredding, classroom project prep, and, um, all of those types of things, and much, much more. So please, um, send them your work if you have projects that you can do, or contact them and see if, if they, um, can accommodate you. And that was the really great thing about, about this program, is, is not only are the students learning the skills, but it also gives the staff a chance to see what kind of accommodations or supports that student might need when they go out into the workforce, so that that can be supplied to them when they actually are trying to get a job. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Director Burgess here?
I'll go next then.
Sure. No, I don't have much to say. You know, kind of same events that you guys attended to, you know, Heritage Days, football games, always really nice to, um, be part of those events, just because we get to see, you know, the energy in the community, and especially our kids, our students. Uh, one very important thing, um, like I said before, the Legislative Committee met just recently, last, this past week, and we talked about, um, you know, just kind of looking into doing some things different this time, you know, not only starting to plan the other platform, but also looking into maybe an earlier forum. Uh, you know, we always have this forum with our legislators, kind of, you know, second, third month of the year, and, uh, we're looking into maybe doing it a little earlier this time, probably before the, before the end of the year. And, um, just looking into what options or what kind of, um, plans we can make in order for us to include our community, the rest of our community, a little bit more. So we just had a little conversation about maybe, um, a plan, a possible plan to start a Legislative Action Committee in the district, you know, something that might include, uh, the voices of the, of the parents, of the students, of the teachers, other members of the community. This is not something that, you know, we don't, we, we have said already, we don't know how we're gonna, we're, we're talking about it, we're just exploring right now. So it will be information that we'll be bringing you later. We're gonna meet again in October, and so we'll be bringing you more information and the platform that the Legislative Committee will be recommending to the Board.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
All right. Let's see what we got. So I stopped off at the Transportation Center and picked up some brochures. I sent them over by the, um, by the agendas tonight, and the, what they're explaining is, um, a danger zone that exists around each and every bus, and not just in our, in our district, but every bus across the, across the United States, and I'm certain across the world. It'll tell you where the, where the most dangerous spots are. Obviously, that's a blind spot for, for a driver, looks like it's right down in front of the bus and on the back right. On the back of this particular, um, handout, does a better job than I've been able to do, explaining what a stop arm is, what it's meant to be, um, when you need to stop, when you, when you can proceed safely. So I would, uh, I would recommend looking this up. If you need more information, you can certainly call the Transportation Center, and they will, um, they'll hand these out to you, or explain it to you. Always interested in keeping our kiddos safe. Met the Oak Grove Elementary PTA. This was, uh, a new liaison school that, that I started this year. Really excited to meet those folks. Really kinda jazzed, I walked down there, I thought I was in the wrong meeting, 'cause there was twenty-five, thirty people down there. And they do it in their, in their media center. Lots of fun to see, uh, so many parents excited to, to find out what opportunities they have in the school to, to volunteer. So it's always fun to see that. Also, um, attended the monthly PTSA council meeting. Um, I know Jim is the, uh, is the liaison rep, and I, I called him beforehand and asked if it was okay if I sat in, and he assured me it was. At least that's how I remember our conversation. And as long as I'm talking about PTSA Council, I wanna give a plug to their Parent Speakers Series. There's one coming up tomorrow night, that's Tuesday, September 27th, from seven to nine right across the hall in Oak Grove Middle Auditorium. It's called Social Media or Social Mania. Presenter Carlos Morales, Viva Technology and Bloomington Police Department. There's a Legislative Forum coming up Monday, October 3rd, that's in the boardroom here. Brain Research in Children, Thursday, January 19th, seven to nine, Oak Grove Middle. Youth Mental Health, Monday, April 3rd, seven to nine, Oak Grove Middle. And you can, uh, contact the PTSA Council if you want more information on this type of thing. Uh, this is more information, yeah, okay. Make sure I'm not missing anything. There also, attended the, um, MSBA Advocacy Tour. We met right here, it happened to come into our, our backyard, this is our, Member District Four, includes among others Richfield, Eden Prairie, um, who am I missing? There's...
Hopkins.
Hopkins, um...
St. Louis Park.
St. Louis Park, and, um, boy, we should know. Anyways, um, we have an opportunity to host these, and I think we got our wires crossed last year, and we weren't able to host, but we made sure that we, we didn't cross those wires, we're able to host that this year. And among other things, we talked about what we should be advocating, what school board members should be advocating for at the legislative level, and it, it was interesting to, to hear, here's how you would present, so your legislators might, uh, I'm paraphrasing, hear it better. And this is perhaps what you might wanna say, so they'll hear it better. And as we continue our advocacy, it extends from out of our district and to the folks over on 1600 Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, which I believe is the state capital. Um, you know, we wanna make sure that we're talking to them and sharing our needs, and, uh, Nellie and the Legislative Committee do a good job of that, but that was really interesting to hear and to listen to. Also, was at Heritage Days, it was really fun to see all the schools. I was at the very beginning, um, of the parade, and, and got to see when the floats were, were organizing themselves and turning the corner, and all the, all the energy. It turned out to be a great day, we had a little bit of sprinkling in the morning, but that went away, and then it didn't, didn't chase too many people away, it was lots of fun to see all that energy there. As Tom mentioned, attended the Parent Advisory Council meeting, it was the first one of the year over at Pond up in 204, and it's really neat to see the energy. Like Tom said, it's, it's, it's fun to see the energy and the effort, um, that goes into what those people do. It's all volunteer work, they're doing sixteen, seventeen programs a year. Um, you know, the popcorn machine is cleaned and ready to go for movie night, or whenever they're using it, but there's so much going on, and so much to offer, and wanna say a big thank you to the Parent Advisory Council for doing that. And last but not least, um, I wanna make sure that, that, um, I acknowledge the, uh, the prep time, the before and after-school time, that, uh, all of our district employees put into their jobs, but specifically, our teachers. I gave what I considered to be a compliment at our last board meeting, a few people, um, perhaps misinterpreted that, and I wanna make sure that it was intended to acknowledge all the work that goes in before, during, and after. So hopefully, hopefully this clears up any, any misgivings, and, and, uh, I hope that, at, at the very least, we can set that record straight. So that, that ends my report.
Thank you. And I'll just tell you that I attended the CFAC meeting, um, in Director Sorme's absence, and, um, one of the things that we did talk about was, um, getting a Legislative Action Group going, so, because they're great advocates of increased state funding for our schools, so, looks like we're all working together on the same page. Thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you. This report recognizes and thanks the Bloomington Noonday Rotary for their Backpack School Program. Every year for over ten years, the Bloomington Noonday Rotary seeks contributions for 125 backpacks, and they stuff these backpacks with donated school supplies. Fifty of these backpacks go to Indian Mount students, the remaining seventy-five goes to Valley View Middle School students, so, thank you for their great citizenship and their generosity. Next thing is the Realtor Forum. Over ten years ago, we would host a Realtor Forum for the school district, to tell the Realtors about our school system. The city and the school district agree it's time to resurrect that program, so we're collaborating with the city to put a Realtor Forum on. It's going to be, we're gonna host it, it's gonna be an over-four-hour program, the program's gonna be split between the school district and the city. It's gonna be held in the fourth week, the third week of October, we'll send out the date and times to the board members, and the goal is to sell the school district and the city to the Realtors, so they can sell the city to their clients. That concludes our report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before the board this evening?
What?
Yes, please.
Did you need to give a summary of the closed session from last time? Or did we do that already?
We did not, we probably shouldn't. Uh, the, we held a closed session last Monday evening after our last board meeting, which was a continuation. Oh, last Mondays was a continuation of an earlier closed session that we had held after the last board meeting. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And that was for the purpose of negotiations discussion. And I believe that's all we need to say, right? Thank you.
Good catch.
If there's nothing else, this meeting's adjourned.
Great.